I'm Erin Boucher, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for October 8th, 2025. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Liz Poploski and Shrewsbury Media Connection for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. The first item on our agenda this evening is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to all residents who would like to address the committee regarding concerns of policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone would like to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson of the school committee in advance of our next scheduled meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairperson and members' reports. Colleagues, anything this evening?
No.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. I have a few items to cite this evening, Ms. Boucher. My first announcement is I'd like to thank the Calvin Coolidge School PTO. They have communicated with me that they're very pleased that they're going to be supporting the remodeling of the existing outdoor classroom at Calvin Coolidge School with an extremely generous $20,000 contribution to that project. Because the PTO will be spending that money directly on the project, it does not need to come through the school committee as a gift to the district, but certainly wanted to make the community aware that the Coolidge PTO has done a lot of work to raise those funds. Those of you who are familiar with the Coolidge campus, kind of on the front left of the building, if you're looking at it from the front on Florence Ave, there's an outdoor classroom area that needs some revitalization and we're very pleased that they're going to be able to provide new furniture repairs so it's fully functional, fully accessible. They've been working through Mr. Girardi and with the Public Buildings Division on how we can move that project forward. And so this very generous donation is going to, in their words, revive the space as a safe, welcoming, and collaborative environment for all Coolidge kids that will enrich instruction, strengthen student engagement, and provide unique opportunities for collaboration in a setting beyond the traditional classroom walls. So this communication was sent to me by Amy Nelson, the president, Leah Tizano, the vice president, Whitney Goger, the secretary, and Hamani Shah, the treasurer of the Coolidge PTO. So we thank them for their generosity that will improve the Coolidge campus. Also connected to the Coolidge community in particular, but to the entire Shrewsbury community, and we just sent out a reminder through our communication channels that tomorrow, October 9th, is a community fundraiser for the Dougherty family. All Shrewsbury Public Schools students, families, and the entire Shrewsbury community are invited tomorrow to wear either tie dye or brightly colored shirts to celebrate what's being called "Shrewsbury is Tied with Love", to together, and I'll quote here, "fill the town with color, joy, and unity." This event is being held in remembrance of Kevin Dougherty, the Coolidge School parent who tragically lost his life on August 28th after dropping his son off at Coolidge School. Mr. Dougherty was a fan of the Grateful Dead. He was known for his joy in life's greatest treasures, family, friends, and fun times spent together. And as a dead fan, clearly a tie dye fan as well. The Coolidge community, we were very pleased, had T-shirts donated by Rockland Trust that they tie dyed a week ago, working with a local company. They'll be wearing those shirts. They were nice enough to do one for me and actually our friends, the students in the Rise Program here in the center of town helped with that process as well. But tomorrow, we invite anyone who has students in our district to send in a contribution to the Dougherty family if they're so inclined. We highly encourage checks made out to the Dougherty Family Trust. Cashes also will be accepted. All donations will go directly to the Dougherty family, to their trust that they've established. And if there are community members who wish to drop off a check at the school department office, of course, we'll be happy to collect those here at 100 Maple Avenue at Town Hall as well. But it's a really touching and appropriate celebration. I know there is a community celebration and fundraiser happening this weekend as well. I know there's a lot of information out there about that. But this is a school-based piece that we're doing tomorrow and we're looking forward to celebrating and recognizing the Dougherty family tomorrow through this event. So really pleased to participate in that and I encourage all of our fellow community members to do so if they can. And there is one other piece of information I would like to share this evening with the community. The in 1997, I was had the great good fortune of being selected as the assistant principal of the then brand-new Floral Street School, where I was able to spend nine years as assistant principal and then principal. Then I moved on to be named the principal of Oak Middle School, where I spent two years before being asked to become assistant superintendent here at Central Office. But at that time, my predecessor, Dr. Anthony Bent, announced his retirement, decided at the time to throw my hat in the ring, and I had the great fortune of being selected by the school committee to become the superintendent of schools. And I am sharing with the community this evening that I have decided that it is the time for me, effective the end of this June, to retire from this position as superintendent of schools in Shrewsbury. It has been a wonderful professional opportunity. Many know that I also live here in the community. I've raised my family here, three daughters, who are all graduates of Shrewsbury High School, of which my wife and I are enormously proud. And really have just been so fortunate to have been a part of this community since we moved here in 1997. And it's been, will always be, the highlight of my career that I was able to spend what will be 17 years as the superintendent of schools and 29 years as of the end of this June, serving the school district. I think we have the best school district anywhere and on a lot of different fronts. Obviously, I'm very proud of what we are able to do for our students and what our community has done to support teaching and learning in our community. I've decided that the time is right for me, both professionally and personally, to make that career change. I won't be retiring from work. I don't have anything lined up. I don't know what I'll be doing as of July 1st, but I think it's time for me to do something different. I also believe it's a good time for a leadership transition here in our community in this role. We have both strategic and financial stability. I have an enormous amount of trust in the school committee to run a professional search and make a good decision about selecting who my successor will be. We have a very stable and outstanding leadership team. We have a wonderful staff, faculty and staff of our school districts, supportive families. I think it's a really wonderful position that hopefully lots of professionals are interested in in terms of considering becoming the next superintendent here in Shrewsbury. We're in a good place in terms of being, and you'll hear later on in our presentation, year three of a five-year strategic plan. We have, we know we have at least a couple of more fiscal years of financial stability thanks to the community's support of the override and the ability of the community to sustain that over many, you know, more years than what it was originally intended to do. We have all of our collective bargaining contracts that have been settled last year, so we're not in any negotiations now. And given that level of stability, I think, because obviously it's, I deeply care for the school district and I want to be sure that when the time came for me to make a change, that we'd be able to have an effective transition. And certainly I'll be dedicated to making sure that that happens in as strong a way as possible when it comes to that happening at the end of the school year into June 2026. Obviously, there'll be more to say when the time comes, but given that the district goals will be formally voted a week from tonight, given that there will be time and effort that the school committee and the district needs to spend on this process of the search for my successor, wanted to make the announcement now to make sure there's plenty of time to do that process right and to be able to have a smooth transition for the school district. I certainly am incredibly grateful for the school committee members currently, all the school committee members that I have been able to work with over my time at 17 or 16-plus at this point, years that I've been in the role. Certainly my leadership team colleagues. We have wonderful relationships with our employee associations, with our faculty and staff just generally, and parent groups and the community at large. It's, I'm very, very proud to have been the superintendent here and to continue to do that work. And obviously, the district will receive my best efforts until the time comes for me to leave in June. So wanted to make that announcement this evening, and that is superintendent's report. End, sorry. As I told the students tonight, don't forget to thank your family. Of course, there'll be time for thanks when June comes, but I also want to make sure that I recognize, you know, this job requires a lot of time and effort, you know, very, my daughters in particular, but my wife, for whom it's our 31st wedding anniversary this evening, as a matter of fact. You know, their support, my extended family's support, my mom, who was an educator. So I thank them as well.
Before we move on, I'd like to thank Dr. Sawyer for his years of service to our district and his outstanding leadership. Among his many accomplishments, he's led the district through the challenges of the pandemic, the construction of two new schools, which serve as models for new schools across the Commonwealth, and two successful operational overrides. He's always remained deeply committed to the success of every learner in our district. As both a parent and a school committee member, while this news is extremely bittersweet, we are incredibly grateful for the legacy of excellence he will leave behind. Dr. Sawyer has built a foundation that will serve our students, staff, and community well into the future. And as a board, we will begin the process of seeking a new superintendent to carry on his work forward. We're going to be committed to a thorough and inclusive process that reflects the values of our community and puts students at the center of every decision. If any of my colleagues would like to...
You know, when Dr. Sawyer called and gave us the news, it's one of those calls, like, you knew it was going to happen sooner rather than later, maybe, but it was still shocking. And I've had the pleasure of working with Dr. Sawyer, I think, since he started in the district. And I look at the legacy that he's leaving, and I think you framed it. In my time as a school committee member, we always thought the budget was our worst thing to deal with, and we've had a lot of issues. And what Dr. Sawyer brought was stability, knowledge, always collaborative, and making sure that everyone in the community was involved. And I see us moving forward that way with search. We're going to have, it's a big role to fill. There is a roadmap to go forward, but we need to make sure that we have the right person. So I, we have a lot of time. We have another year to work, but I want to thank Dr. Sawyer for everything he's done. My children, my family has benefited immensely from having him in this district. So we have time, but it's one of those calls, you're like, oh, no. I knew it was going to happen, but we have a lot of work to do going forward, and I'm just glad we have another year with Dr. Sawyer at the helm.
I'm going to save a lot of my comments for the end of the year, but Dr. Sawyer, first, I want to thank Dr. Sawyer for his leadership because even though I've been on school committee for two years, prior to that, I was just a parent in the district and I had every confidence in his ability to lead. But now, the last couple of years of being able to work directly with him and have lots of conversations, truly, I am so impressed by his leadership style. And he has made an impact on us as a committee. He has made an impact on families. He has made an impact on the staff, his leadership team, but the students too. And that is something that is going to be really hard shoes to fill because not, not every superintendent is equal to Dr. Sawyer. And there are other districts, if you look in Massachusetts, the country, there are districts that struggle. And we don't see some of the struggles that other districts do, and so much of that really comes down to the leadership that we have here. So I am sad for us. But I'm, I'm happy for Dr. Sawyer for making this decision for himself and his family. I know great things are to come. We have a lot of work still to do this year. So I will, I will deal with sadness later, but for now, I just wish you the best of luck and we have a long year still to go.
Yeah, I wish you the best for bringing in the stable leadership across these, all these years, like 29 years in Shrewsbury and 17 years as superintendent, superintendent. So yeah, as my colleagues mentioned, I'll save my remarks to the end of the year, but we wish you the best. We look forward to working with you to have a smooth transition into, into the next, next year. I think I, one thing we greatly appreciate is the smooth sailing, the planning ahead of the, ahead of the strategic plan, like with three more years, three years we're done, two more years to go. And then the budget stability as it, as it stands right now. So it's a perfect, thanks for considering all those things in your decision. We appreciate your service for sure, and then we wish you the best wherever you, your future endeavors take you to. And we look forward to working with you for the rest of the year and beyond, and with all other capacity.
Well, I appreciate all your kind remarks. Thank you very much. And certainly, and I made my comments earlier, one group, and I know we're going to recognize four extraordinary students in a moment here. You know, the comment Ms. Boucher made about keeping students at the center, that's something, you know, I know that we try to strive to do as a school community. That's something that's given me just tremendous joy over the years and to, one of the real benefits of having been one place for almost three decades is to have seen generations of students come to our schools and move on into their adult lives. And whether those are students who are former students who are working here for the town or for public safety or, you know, running into families at the supermarket and finding out things that, you know, our graduates are doing in their adult lives is incredibly gratifying. And I know that, you know, there's so many, so many stories about things that our schools have been able to do to make students' lives better. And that's always what will be most rewarding for me. So thank you to all the students that have had the pleasure of being able to serve over the years as well. So thank you. More to come, obviously, in terms of the process and with the school committee, but I do entirely trust you'll be able to run an excellent process and find an excellent successor to help the district move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the superintendent's award. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents requests that each superintendent, on its behalf, recognize outstanding members of the senior class in each district's high school. Based on the size of the graduating class, Dr. Sawyer is allowed to present the award to two students this year. Dr. Sawyer has selected Vinesh Navi Ayr and Sam Rajwani as this year's recipients due to their outstanding academic performance. The New England School Development Council gives superintendents in affiliated districts the opportunity to present the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning to deserving high school seniors. Due to the size of the district, Dr. Sawyer is allowed to present the award to two students. Based on the recommendation of Mr. O'Connell, the Shrewsbury High School Assistant Principal, who's the great administrator for the class of 2025.
2026, that's a typo.
Oh, 2026, sorry, yeah.
It's my, my typo.
Along with Mr. Buzidlow, the principal, Kelvin Sango and Shrigori Vingala have been selected as this year's recipients. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. O'Connell will provide highlights of each student's achievements, recognize them, and ask each to make a brief statement.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. And so we'll begin with the superintendent's awards. And just alphabetically, we will start with Vaishnavi Ayr. Vaishnavi, and what I will do is I will read a blurb with some information that the high school has provided about each student. Each student will have a chance to address the committee and make some remarks. After we've gone through all four, Mr. Buzidlow and Mr. O'Connell will make some brief remarks. They'll receive some certificates. We'll do a photo op and then we'll, they can be on their way to do more good, good work outside of this, this school committee meeting. But we'll start with Vaishnavi. She is noted as an intellectually rigorous and compassionate scholar whose passion for biochemistry is matched by her resilience and creativity. Her research experience at UMass Chan's Schiffer Lab, where she became the first to crystallize a challenging viral protein system, and her internship with UMass Diabetes broadened her scientific insight and commitment to public health. Alongside her academic drive, she has earned distinctions as a national merit semifinalist, Yale Book Award recipient, and AP Scholar while excelling in speech and debate at the state and national levels. Equally notable are her leadership and character. She is empathetic, collaborative, and innovative, whether designing dignity restoring programs for dementia residents, co-leading peers through National Honor Society and French National Honor Society initiatives, or building confidence in younger students through fashion club and debate coaching. Guided by persistence and grounded independence, Vaishnavi integrates intellectual curiosity with human-centered leadership, making her a student who elevates every community she joins. So would Vaishnavi please come forward and make some remarks?
All right. Thank you so much for your kind remarks. I would like to start with a couple brief thank yous, but comprehensive ones, of course. I wanted to start off by thanking the school committee and the select board, and of course, every other school governing and community governing body. Without you, none of us would be here, and we wouldn't be able to accomplish nearly all of the things that we do. Next, of course, my endless thanks goes out to our administration team. I've had the honor to work with each and every single one of them, and I can't help with each interaction. Notice their seemingly endless positivity and every single time, their helping others mentality. A specific shout out to our great administrator, Mr. O'Connell. Every single time I talk to him, I notice how he tries to make a connection with every single one of the nearly 500 students in our class, and I can't help but be amazed. Next, of course, I wouldn't be the person I am without the impact of every single educator who has touched me. And for them, I wanted to note a couple throughout the years who have made some of the greatest impacts. All the way back in third grade at Calvin Coolidge Elementary School, Mrs. Inimiradi was one of the first teachers to push my own boundaries and show me that there are opportunities everywhere, wherever I want to look. And I think the same can be said for two of my favorite teachers from last year, Mrs. Moynihan and Mrs. Busso, who made the stereotypically stressful junior year one filled instead with many memories. And obviously, I could spend the rest of this two minutes talking about all the other educators who have impacted me, but I think that I wanted to save a little bit of time for the biggest in my culture teachers or gurus, which happened to be my parents. For the past 18 years, of course, they have shaped me and turned me into the person that, looking back 10 years in the future, I will always be proud of. And whether it's my parents, my siblings, my friends, my, my family, friends, everyone has made me into the person that I am today, and without them, I would be a shell of the person that I am. And so to wrap up, I kind of wanted to elaborate a little bit about why this community is so special to me. I think that it's simply just the community. I think that, looking back as a senior, where there's so many community-based events, I really noticed how even though our school district is so huge, there is always interconnectedness, and that has always been one of my favorite parts of being a member of the SPS community. So thank you very much for this at Warner.
Thank you so much, Vaishnavi. The other recipient of the superintendent's award for academic excellence is Sam Rajwani. Sam is an exceptional student whose academic excellence, leadership, and character shine across every area of his life. He approaches learning with both depth and enthusiasm, excelling in advanced coursework across disciplines, and showing a particular appreciation for statistics, where he enjoys connecting theory to real-world applications. At the same time, he immerses himself fully in the humanities, from Latin to the history of rock and roll, bringing intellectual curiosity and creativity to every subject he studies. Beyond the classroom, Sam leads with humility and initiative as a track and field captain, fostering teen culture while excelling as a six-time varsity letter winner and league all-star in the demanding 400-meter and 4x400-meter relay. His commitment to service is equally impressive. He's volunteered with the Appalachia Service Project, spearheaded a civic campaign on public water safety, partnered with athletes in Unified Soccer, and shaped meaningful programming for younger students through the Mentor Volunteer Program. Sam also brings responsibility and empathy to his work experiences, whether assisting senior citizens through caring transitions, managing facilities at Lake Chauncey, or serving as a camp counselor. Described by peers as driven to excel, he combines natural talent with relentless work ethic, optimism, and a strong moral compass. So please welcome Sam Rajwani to the podium.
Hi. I've got a lot of people to thank, so I'm just going to start. So first and foremost, I'd like to thank Mr. Buzidlow, Mr. O'Connell, Dr. Sawyer, and the school committee. Thank you for this award and just all of the work that you put in to make the high school and Shrewsbury Public School such a great place. I really appreciate it. And also, thank you to my teachers. If I had time, I would thank like every teacher I've had, but I don't. So I'm just going to thank a few in depth. So my Russian school math teacher, Mrs. Nallescu, who I had for eight years, really taught me to sort of strive for excellence and also, you know, like do math. And then my old babysitter, Sarah Miller, taught me how to read, and she made me love reading. Dr. Thompson, who is my Latin teacher, and really the whole Latin department, has taught me to sort of make parallels between the present and history, which I think is really important. Mrs. Roberts, who is my freshman year English teacher, instilled a love of writing in me. Ms. Noel, my statistics teacher from last year, was really impactful. She helped me objectively analyze data. Mr. Brown, my history teacher, taught me the importance of activism. Coach Butterfield and Coach Mortimer, my track coaches, have taught me the importance of hard work. My trainer, Brian Cody, is always there to talk to. He inspires me to improve myself and push through difficult times. So really, just thank you to all my teachers and my coaches. There will never be enough time to thank you all. And then I want to give a special thank you to my family. So thank you to my grandma and my uncle, who is not here, who have just been such positive role models. Thank you to my parents, mom and dad, for just giving me every opportunity to grow and learn and succeed and for teaching me to think critically and preaching the importance of balance and just giving me unconditional love and forgiveness. I'm very lucky. And thank you to my twin sister Lucy for being my best friend. She helps me study. She gives the best pep talks. She makes me laugh. You guys are all the best. There's so many more people to thank, but I don't have the time. I'm, I'm very lucky. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sam. And now to the two recipients of the National School Development Council's Award for Academic Growth in Student Leadership in Learning. Our first recipient is Kelvin Sango. Throughout his high school career, Kelvin has demonstrated an inspiring commitment to perseverance, curiosity, and excellence. His passion for French, engineering, chemistry, and math reflect both his deep respect for his cultural roots and his drive to understand the world through innovation and problem solving. Always striving to be the best version of himself, Kelvin has continuously sought feedback, refined his skills, and emerged as a stronger, more confident learner. As vice president of the Black History Committee, captain of the track and field team, and a member of the National Honor Society, Kelvin leads with empathy, energy, and integrity, uplifting his peers and modeling what it means to strive for personal and collective success. His growth mindset, resilience, and positive spirit make him a shining example of academic and personal leadership. So please welcome Kelvin to the podium.
There we go. Hello. First and foremost, I would love to thank my family and for, without them, my parents especially, they were the role models for, they were the role models for me to become the person I am today. And definitely my sisters, for every day, it seems like they always give me a lesson in common sense every single day. And so without them, I wouldn't be here as well. And I like to thank my great administrators, especially Mr. O'Connell. Especially every day, I get to pass by the hallways, have a conversation, a real deep conversation with him every single day. It's truly special, always coming to the Leadership Book Club meetings, always knowing I can have a nice time and I can be able to talk to him as well. And even having him think of me as worthy to even receive this award, I'm truly thankful for that. Even thinking back on all the teachers who really helped me, also shaped me to become the person I am today. There's just too many, of course, too many to say, but when thinking back right now, I like to thank Mrs. Dougherty, my fourth grade teacher, who introduced me to my first love of reading as well. When showing me the book Percy Jackson, if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be having this growth mindset, this want to know, to learn, to always want to know more. So I would really, really, really love to thank her as well. And to think more, there's just too many teachers, too many teachers I can think of right now, but since it's two minutes, well, I'd have to keep it short. But to wrap it up, I just really like to thank everyone here today for, without anybody who interacted in my life, I wouldn't be here standing right now.
Thank you, Kelvin. And our other recipient is Shrigori Vingala. Shrigori is a hardworking, dedicated student with an infectious smile and a heart of gold. As president of the Community Service Learning Board, she's the engine behind the Service Learning Volunteer Program. She helped verify tens of thousands of student volunteer hours, organized a volunteer fair for 200-plus students, and led a supply drive that raised significant support for a local under-resourced for a local under-resourced school. Off-campus, she's been nationally active with securing safe food, helping secure pantry partnerships during crises. She served as the only high school fellow in a county public health cohort and mentored students with food allergies through hospital programs. She also co-founded a book club radio show, contributes to the quiz team, and brings a calm voice to public health conversations in Worcester. To name a few of her academic accomplishments, she earned top honors in multiple AP courses, has earned the Seal of Biliteracy in Spanish, and won the Dartmouth Book Award. Shrigori is organized, compassionate, and endlessly proactive. She builds systems that help other people help each other, and she's the kind of student who will turn her passion for allergies and public health into real impact. Please welcome Shrigori to the podium.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, for the very kind introduction. I would like to begin by thanking Mr. Buzidlo, Mr. O'Connell, and the members of the school committee for this tremendous honor. As I stand here before everyone, I'm overwhelmed for gratitude for everyone in my life. First and foremost, thank you to my mom, who inspires me to approach challenging situations with grace and courage. Thank you for my dad, for leading by example. His pursuit of lifelong learning motivates me to become a better student in and outside of the classroom. To my sister, who is watching this livestream from Boston, thank you for being my first supporter. Even when the nights go long, she stays by my side, muted on call as I study. And finally, a special thank you to my grandma, whose presence means more to me than I can express. I also couldn't have done it without my friends. Their humor, their company, and their kindness propel me forward. So this award is not mine alone, but rather a reflection of the love, patience, and support I've received from my community. I would also like to thank the Spanish department in the Shrewsbury Public Schools for having a profound impact on my life. In particular, I'm grateful to my seventh grade Spanish teacher, Senora Pierce, who sparked a love for Spanish that still endures today. Despite the confines of remote learning, she pushed me to grow and explore my passion beyond the classroom. Loving Spanish has taught me to love school and experience it will never forget. Thank you to every one of my Spanish teachers for believing in me. Thank you also to Ms. Moynihan, Ms. Palazzo, Ms. Bradberg, and Ms. Burnett for helping me embrace my growth. I'm also very grateful for Ms. Satterfield, my mentor on the Service Learning Board, who has taught me what it means to be a leader. She has shown me that good leadership builds bridges and is selfless. Being on the service board has given me an unparalleled sense of purpose and connection. To my peers, thank you for your commitment to giving back. To conclude, my time in the Shrewsbury Public Schools has been defined by gratitude and connection and is something I will cherish. Thank you.
Thank you, Shrigori. So at this time, we'd like to invite Ms. Buzidlo and Mr. O'Connell to come forward to the table just to share a few brief remarks about our student awardees this evening, and then the school committee will have a chance to comment.
This is very difficult to follow up those four students, for sure. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. O'Connell. And when we talk about the type of impact that students have, I mean, when we have these conversations about who should be, receive these awards, we have some really thorough conversations. And he has a good pulse on the senior class and thoroughly knows, I've seen the vast majority of students. So I think what you saw tonight was a really good reflection of our school community and his stewardship and leadership of the class of 2026. I'll let him talk about each of the students and his kind of perspective on them, on their efforts and how they are in a community as a citizen. So I'll turn over to Mr. O'Connell.
Sure. I don't think I could do a better job than what our counselors did in their write-ups. I think they're truly spot on. And there's two things that I think I pulled out of their conversations. And what a great example of what our student body is like out of celebrating these four tonight, and Sam, and Vaishnavi, and Kelvin, and Shrigori. They're excellent exemplars. And there's two things that I picked out. And one of them is Vaishnavi's statement about community and Shrigori's, you know, theme and appreciation for gratitude. And those two important things, and I think they're absolutely interconnected in what we do. And I think, thinking about tonight and your reflection about Dr. Sawyer's announcement this evening, which certainly an opportunity for us to be reflective and have gratitude about that. And I think about Coolidge School, for which I'm a product of, and I know the Irs who are here tonight are products of. And I know we're super proud and fortunate and thankful that we have a community that comes together and providing the support that they are. But, you know, I think about this group of students behind me, and, you know, whether you can see it on TV or not, and surrounded by just strong family support. And I think it speaks to our town. And I think they're great, they're phenomenal exemplars. But, and they're on display tonight, but they are just perfect examples of what the Shrewsbury Public School system produces just because it attracts great students, great families, who care deeply about one another and they care about this community. And their example at school really sets a foundation in their own pockets that have a ripple effect that impacts throughout our whole school. And we're incredibly fortunate to have them. It's tremendous that they're being honored tonight, and it's so well-deserved for all four of them.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations to all the students and the families. And I think that's what resonated with me, the talk about community and being connected. And it starts from the top down. You know, Dr. Sawyer has led for a long time, the superintendent before, and then our staff, I mean, our staff, we can't, we just have amazing staff. And, you know, you're the product of getting that good public education. And that's what we want as school committee members. We're passionate about public education, and you're examples of that. And personally, I think it's harder to be a student today than maybe when I was growing up. The world's a different place, social media. So I think it's even more impressive how well our students are doing, despite kind of a crazy world that we live in. So congratulations to everyone, and particularly to your families for supporting you through this.
Thank you. Congratulations to each of you. So impressive, each one of you. And you all have so many different interests, both academic and extracurricular. You make us as a committee so proud. You make your families, you make your teachers, your principals so proud of what you do. And your success is what makes us as a committee so happy to do what we do and to support you and to have conversations. We love having students come and telling us all of your successes. Because whatever we can do as a district to make sure that you're a success, check the box. That's great. And it truly takes a village between your teachers, your principals, parents, coaches, your trainers, your siblings, your tutors, your babysitters. You all named so many different people. And those people are really who have framed you. And when you look back 10, 15 years from now, when you have your own children or whatever, you can look back and say, wow, that person really made a difference to me. And, you know, maybe you can impart that on your own families at some point. But thank you for acknowledging all the different people who helped you get to where you are. Again, you've made all of us so proud of you, and you truly are so impressive with everything you've accomplished. And maybe you can come back in 10 years and tell us what you're doing then. Because if you're as accomplished as you are right now, I can't imagine what 10 years from now you're going to look like.
Yeah, congratulations to all four of you. It's incredible achievements at this age. As a select board, as a school committee member, we are very proud of all the accomplishments you have done, achieved. I think one thing resonates with me. You are both excelling in academics, not only academics, but also in the community engagement. I think that's very critical to be a good citizen and a leader moving forward. So I think you got all the recipe to be successful in life, and you have an impact, not just by yourself, but to be a role model for the rest of the students that are coming up within our school system. So congratulations. Keep up the good work. Do come back and share your great success stories as you move on in your career. Thank you.
I'd also like to extend my congratulations to all of you and to your families. This is tremendous amount of accomplishments in your short lives. All of the different academic achievements and community involvement, and just the representation that you are for the class of 2026 and the culture that you create at Shrewsbury High School. As Mr. O'Connell said, the ripple effects of all of the different contributions you all make and just the strengthening, you know, of the community at Shrewsbury High School to make it such a wonderful place, such a great environment there for all the students. So thank you very much. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. So at this time, we would love to have our four honorees come up and shake the committee's hand. They'll get a certificate from me, and we'll ask them to stand up here for a photo op with Mr. Buzidlo and Mr. O'Connell and the committee and myself for their families. And how about another round of applause for our four awardees? All right, come on up.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Right. The superintendent, these are temporary for the superintendent's awards because they haven't come in yet. So we'll give them that for now, and we'll get to the real ones soon. Congratulations. Congratulations. Outstanding. Congratulations. Well done. All right, so maybe if we want to have them stand in front here, Mr. O'Connell, Mr. Buzidlo, you want to come on up?
Not really about me, but that's okay.
Make sure you're holding those certificates right side up. The paparazzi. All right, how about one final round of applause for our awardees?
Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is the Future Plans of the Class of 2025 report. Each year, the high school administration provides data on post-high school plans of the most recent graduating class. Mr. Buzidlo and Ms. Flynn will present an overview of the enclosed report that we received and provide information regarding what students plan to do after graduating. Given that the vast majority of students go on to post-secondary education, the report focuses on colleges and universities where the students were accepted and where they matriculated, including information broken down by different student demographic groups. So good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Thanks for having us. And again, a really hard act to follow up, but we have some really good information that we'd like to share with the committee regarding the future plans of the class of 2025. And it's another good news story of the hard work that our staff's doing and also our school counseling department has done, and also our families in town. And I think when we, in the context of what this report, I think we need to continue to stress that we have a number of students who get accepted to really outstanding colleges and universities. And what our community tries to stress with families is let's make sure we try and find the right fit. Like, and we mean fit, like where do you feel like you have a sense of belonging and connection? Similar to potentially, if they've had a good experience at high school, where does that match your own values and beliefs in terms of what that looks like on a college campus? So we certainly have stressed the Frank Bruni work. Where you go is not who you'll be. And also, looking at their outstanding accomplishments. And we're happy to answer any questions at the end of the report and want to share with you some of the highlights from the class of 2025 and where they're, where they matriculated and enrolled.
So the class of 2025 had 421 students, and 81% attended four-year colleges, 12% attended two-year colleges or technical schools, and then 7% entered either the employment field, enlisted in the military, took a gap year, or such. And this year, we put in this graph to show sort of a comparison chart of the last five years. And what's notable this year is the increase in the two-year college and technical school. It went from 8% last year to 12% this year. And that's specifically for the technical and trade schools. The numbers for the community college pretty much stayed the same. So we did see more students go to those trade schools. In terms of public and private schools, 394 students of those 421 enrolled in either a four-year or a two-year or a trade school. 87% attended a four-year college, 13% attended a two-year. And what's interesting is 58% attended public colleges and 42% attended the private colleges and universities, whereas last year, it was 51% attended public colleges. So we're seeing an increase of the students attending public schools. And this just shows the graphs of that.
We also take a look at the male, female, gender distribution of enrollments and future plans. And as you'll see by this pie graph, there's 209 males in the class of 2025 and 212 females in the class of 2025. On the pie graph on the left, you'll see that 79% attended four-year colleges, 12% attended two-year college or career technical or postgraduate school, and 9% had either joined the workforce or had other plans. While from the females' side, we had 83% attend four-year colleges, 12% again, two-year, four-year technical schools or PG year, and also 5% of females joined the workforce or had other educational plans. We also drill down and look at the number of students who receive special education services and where they land at the end of the school year. So 25% of that group ended up at a four-year college, 40% in a two-year college, and 35 had either joined the workforce or had other plans. We also take a look at free and reduced lunch in terms of we still are accepting applications. And you'll probably, people in the community will see this from my communication this weekend, where still have applications open for those that might qualify. They qualify for potential college application waivers or advanced placement and college board waivers and fee waivers. So there'll be information in my Sunday newsletter about that. I've had a conversation today with Mrs. Flynn about how we can potentially take a look at that to reduce some barriers for students and families. But that being said, within the class, 51% of students who qualified for that under that program attended a four-year college, 33% attended two-year, and again, 16 were entered to workforce or had other plans. We've had some of the highest enrollment in terms of English language learners at the high school, and we've been tracking them very carefully in terms of trying to get them up to speed in terms of not only getting a diploma, but also provide them a pathway for post-secondary planning, whether it's the college track or the career track. And as we'll see, 10% of our students who are designated as English language learners attend a four-year college, enroll in a four-year college, 40% attend a two-year college, and 50% of that group join the workforce and had other plans. We also put together this chart to take a look at by demographics, students' race and ethnicity in terms of where it lays out. And as you'll see, with cohorts of less than 10 students, we don't report on that because it's identifiable. Oops, sorry about that. But again, the spread across the board between two-year and four-year, public and private, just to get a sense of where students may be enrolling and applying, or the type of institution, whether public or private. Is this my slide? Great. This is the slide that really speaks to me in terms of just the scope of the work of our school counselors. They process 3,711 applications. The class, if you saw from the beginning, had a net of 421 students, which was one of the smaller classes we've had in recent years. And yet, they had the highest number of applications. The class of 2020, actually, when you look at this chart, was the largest graduating class in Shrewsbury High School's history. And they had 38, 48, which correlates to the size of the class when you have 80 less students and nearly the same amount of applications. That presents challenges in terms of the amount of workload for our school counselors and for families, and also the costs associated with it. So for this class of 2025, the students applied to 359 different colleges and universities. They're accepted to 292. And when you drill all the way down, we had 110 actually enroll of that big number from 359. Again, as the smallest number of enrollments, if you look from 2019 and 2020 to 2025, it's the least number of schools that people enrolled, and yet we had the most applications. Parents will often ask us, what's the perfect number of applications? I don't know the perfect number. What I would say is, and we say this at freshman orientation, we can't be everything to everybody. So we have to start to narrow down that search and maybe not take a scatter approach to everything. Do you want Urban? Do you want Earl? Do you want something in the middle? Do you want big school, small school, private, not private? Then you have to look at programming. There's a lot of factors that go into it. I know members on the committee and the superintendent have been through this process with their own children. So it's a very thorough process and hard to do for families, for sure. It's very labor-intensive, but I think... But I think this year, the average number of student applications is eight. I think eight to 10, eight to 12 is always kind of a good number. Just get a good, you want a couple of reach schools, you want a couple of safety schools, and you want a couple of schools that might be, you know, geographically out of the region to see what type of merit money you may get. Students that go out of region, and we'll show a geographic matriculation pie chart in a bit, can be awarded more merit money because they're trying to round out enrollments and matriculations by colleges depending on region. That's just a fact. Being in the Northeast, we have a number of great colleges and universities. So, our students are up against some of the best in the country and the world. Lastly, there were 62 students that had more than 15 applications. Again, a bar graph here, just a comparison bar graph, left to right from 2025 to 2020. The blues, the schools applied, the reds accepted, and the yellows enrolled.
So, we put this chart in every year just to show the caseloads of the high school counselors at Shrewsbury. I think it's important to see that they have a higher caseload than area high schools and high schools comparable to Shrewsbury. Given, you know, the number of applications we process every year, you know, some students have up to, this last year, one student applied to 38 schools. So, it's just very time-consuming. And we do that along with other parts of our job. We're in the classroom. We do, we implement tier-one interventions when it comes to attendance, academic, social, emotional. So, I'd just like to show, you know, how, just a little plug, maybe you could get another counselor to bring those caseloads down and to really work with our students on a more individual basis. We are at 234, which in my opinion is, is high. I'd like to see it closer to 200. And then this is the geographic breakdown that Mr. Buzilow was speaking of. So, 75% of our students do attend schools in New England. I did look and it was 60% is Massachusetts particularly. So, we do see most of our students stay, stay in the area. But we did this last year, have some students, one student went to France, Spain, the UK. So, they do go all over.
And the, and this kind of mirrors what happens nationally. Anywhere between 75 and 85% of students regionally will stay within two to three hours of their home. The mid-Atlantic, that 10% is actually from DC North. So, you're talking the Northeast corridor, Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania, New York. So, most of our students are attending somewhere in the Northeast region. Great. Any questions?
I have a question if I have the number right. I think of the students who are either taking a gap or military employment, there was 18 going into employment. Is, do we ask, is there any correlation with some of the CTE programming? Is there any trade? Like, are we looking into maybe what students are doing for employment that might correlate with some of the activities that we're doing at the high school now?
I know particularly the trade schools, we've seen like an increase where students are attending like Peterson School. There's a few from last year attending Peterson, then there's some cosmetology, those types of schools. But specifically for employment, we don't, we don't ask them, you know, where they're getting, you know, where they're being employed. And sometimes it's a family business, sometimes, you know, just anecdotally, we, we ask them.
Is that something that you've, especially where we're putting more resources into the CTE? I'm wondering if we can have some data collection around that? And again, they may not want to disclose their ask.
Right, yeah. We can certainly ask them. We do meet with all our seniors in May to sort of, do sort of an exit interview, as we call it. And if they're willing to share, we can certainly ask.
I think it would be interesting to see if there's some correlation with the, with the increase in the CTE program.
Yes, definitely.
Perfect, thank you.
So, I've been here a while, so I would say yes, there is a correlation. I don't have the evidence for it, but anecdotally, without a doubt, in terms of bringing people in, whether it's our plumbers who have, they basically employ students who want to become plumbers. There's another group that is an electrical group that actually, they train people, we electricians, they actually offer our students jobs. They work full-time and then go to school in their own private company, school, on the weekends. So, they're entitled, they have to go to work on a Saturday and they work towards their apprentice license, their journeyman license, and then towards their master license after getting all the hours. So, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty interesting thing. So, we've had a number of connections. And Mrs. Ayers, in her work around this, has been really remarkable in terms of bringing in people in our school counseling department, identifying people who might be interested in that pathway. I've sat in a bunch of those presentations and found them pretty enticing and exciting in terms of just the opportunities available with, you know, tradespeople make very good money. There is a time commitment for sure between, you know, two to six years to get your license. But when you do, really, the ceiling is a limit in terms of how much you want to work and how much money you want to make. And that's something that we've been continuing to talk to our students about. Like, we know colleges are for everyone, but that's one of the areas. I also think that we've had a little bit of bump with the community colleges being free, tuition-free of people want to try out a two-year college before committing to a four-year college. We've had a number of students who have said, I can't afford college, or I think college is too expensive, they'll do the two-year college with direct admit, with articulation agreements to WPI, UMass Eisenberg, Worcester State. You go down the list, there's a number of agreements that QCC has with other universities where if students go for two years and then can finish their bachelor's degree, they're direct admits. Right now, Eisenberg, I believe, is not accepting any more students internally for transfers. So, if you want to go to business school at the University of Massachusetts, it's direct admit only in terms of either you matriculate and enroll in a Samhurst and go to Eisenberg, or you go to a community college and you have articulation agreement. Well, that's the only, that's the only way a transfer can get into Eisenberg right now. It's really wildly popular and the value is there.
Great, thank you.
I have a question on how does college recruiting or colleges coming into Shrewsbury High School, what does that look like for our students? So, when they're getting ready to apply for school, do we have colleges come in and what does that look like for the students? And then for, smiling at me.
Yeah, we just had this conversation, we had a conversation with the leadership team.
How does, how does that look? And especially because, you know, with the number of students that each of the counselors have, what work does that put on to our counselors too, to make sure that colleges can come in to talk to students?
So, this year, we've had the highest number of colleges come in, over 90 this year, which is, I think it's usually around 70, 75. So, our, we have an online program that we use, so colleges can register through there. We push that out in the summer. And then students go onto that online program, SCORE, and they sign up for a visit. So, it's pretty, that piece of it is pretty, not too much for the counselors other than when they speak to the students and say, oh, we think, you know, this would be a good fit. Maybe you should listen to UMass Samhurst come in. This is the day and time they're coming in. So, but we do, you know, they come in all September, October, November. They, we can have up to four or five schools a day. So, students do, you know, they sign up, they have to get permission from their teacher. And then we hold them in our career center.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the presentation. So, I have a couple of questions. One with the bar chart on, related to the five-year period where the college accepted, yeah, this one. So, it looks like the ones that are enrolled are relatively smaller than the rest of the years. So, is that what's, what's happening there? It looks like the rest of, like, with applied to schools, more or less at the same level, accepted is more or less same level, but enrolled looks like dropped.
Yeah, so that's at 110, if you look at this graphic, this graph. So, in this right-hand column where my cursor is, there's 110 schools where students enrolled. Where all these other years were, you know, they're at least 10, 10 or more higher. So, that's not the number of students per se. It's just like, this is 110 schools where this is, whatever the corresponding number was. I probably could have put the, the numbers on the graph. Last year was 123, the year before was 121, 129, 130. So, that's how they correspond with the bar graph. So, the chart's probably a better thing to look at. But it's a, it's a visual represent, representation of where students enroll.
I think more students.
Oh, so the admissions process narrowed then overall. They're going to the most limited number of schools than they used to go previously.
Right, like more students are going to the same school. So, you know, UMass Samhurst, for instance, in the actual report that we sent you, I believe UMass Samhurst had 58, 53 students attend. So, that's, you know, and then after that, it was QCC at 38, University of Connecticut 14. So, you're just seeing more students go to particularly the public colleges. 53 is high, that's the highest UMass Samhurst has had in the last few years.
So, one other question to relate to, five-year comparison chart on, I think, I think you, Mr. Buzilow, you addressed that, like, that 12% in five years comparison, comparison chart.
If I, yeah, that one.
So, that, that 12% does not include QCC?
It does.
It does? Okay, so, you know, I think that's what, it may be the state benefits free education or free tuition fee, free.
Right.
Figured that, right? So, could be the reason. Do we, one other last question, just a thought here. Do we, do we track also the technical education students like Asabat, where they've been enlisted?
No, no, like students who attend Asabat where they end, no. We don't really have access.
Do we get data back from Asabat at any point? Or can we get it from DSE at some point?
That's a great question. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm wondering if Mr. Girardi or Dr. Sawyer could.
I can, I can speak to that a bit. I know that a few years ago, when we, when the admissions process changed at Asabat and we were losing the level of access that we had for our students, some of the work we were doing to identify, there were some questions that the committee at the time had about what were happening to Shrewsbury students who had attended Asabat. And unfortunately, Asabat couldn't give us specific reports on Shrewsbury students and exactly what they had done. What we do know, that's just a point of interest, is that all vocational, technical high schools have to report to the state what their students are doing even a number of years after graduation. It's like a five-year out report that they have to do. And on a statewide basis, and this is not, I believe it was pretty similar for Asabat, there's not a huge correlation between the vocational, technical track a student chose or a subject or was known as a shop in their voc-tech high school and what they were actually doing. Some certainly did, some might have chosen plumbing and gone into the plumbing industry and remained that. But of course, one of the phenomena that we had seen in vocational, technical high school is more and more of those students going to colleges, either two-year or four-year colleges. And so, they weren't necessarily going into the trade that they had studied, but they were interested in a hands-on vocational, technical type of experience for high school. But yet, we're taking a very similar track to what most of our students take in terms of heading to post-secondary education afterwards. But in terms of our, I think there, there may be an opportunity now, now that we're a few years out, of course, with our new partnership with Lester High School being our vocational, technical high school of choice. As the students who are now attending there as freshmen, and we have a couple who are there as sophomores, you know, move on and matriculate and graduate, you know, that's something we could ask for. And we can, now we have a very small number at Asabat, so we may be able to find out more information about what's happened. We can check in with them to see what, if they have any data on what students last year who graduated who are Shrewsbury residents in terms of what their, what their choices were. Because it's a small sample size, similar to some of these other groups, we all want to be careful not to be, you know, publishing specific information about kids that would, would identify them individually. But it's an interesting question in terms of, you know, how many might be going on to college versus moving into a trade right away.
Thank you.
Just have a question about the steps that we take to assist and work with low-income students and English learner students to help them navigating the college application process.
So, we work with REL teachers and we specifically go into those classrooms and we really work with those students, giving them, we modify our curriculum. We sit down with them, kind of go through the process so they get a very hands-on appro, all of our students get a hands-on approach. But we sort of want to make sure we modify that process for those students so they understand. And then same for the free, reduced lunch students. We do really try to, as Mr. Buzilow said, let them know of all the resources out there. Many of the resources you do have to qualify for the free, reduced lunch. So, we want to make sure they apply for it. I think now some students don't because, oh, I get lunch free, I don't need to apply for it. So, we really want to let them know they should apply for it because there's so many other resources available to them. And once we know, you know, those students, we do work with them and give them all those resources.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
I want to thank Ms. Flynn and Mr. Buzilow for the report. Certainly all the work that the school counselors did to assist students and their families. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, I'm the proud father of three graduates who've all gone through this process and all had really good service from the same counselor because they do it alphabetically. So, you know, that was, certainly appreciated that. But I, you know, I think it is important to note just the volume. And I think it would be helpful, Ms. Flynn, can you just speak a little bit to, you know, there are certain things that are going to be sort of the same effort. I mean, the number of students you have, right? That's, you know, the, I don't know what a typical number of seniors is. Do you have a typical average in terms of how many seniors a counselor would have in a year?
Like 65.
Okay, so, that's 65 letters that the counselor's writing as part of their application process, which is no, not an easy lift. Can you speak a little bit to what, you know, whether a student applies to one school or 10 schools or 20 schools? What is it that the counselor does just once? But what is it that has to happen when there are more schools that the student's applying to that makes a difference in terms of kind of workload?
Right, I think, I mean, initially when we meet, well, it really starts in the junior year when we meet with students and we sort of do that initial planning. But then senior year, they come in and we meet with students. And it really becomes, we meet with them several times because it's sort of like honing down that list and figuring out the best fit for students. And it's, they typically revise it over and over. So, they may apply to five or six schools in November and then they're like, oh, they come back. Oh, I think I might want to apply to this school, what do, what do you think? So, it's just meeting the students over and over. I mean, they do do the Common App, so that, that piece of it, they only do the Common App once. And we'll look at their essay and their supplements. And sometimes the supplement essays we'll read several times. The nice thing about SCORE, the program we use, it now integrates with Common App, so we have access to everything that we can see on the student side of it. So, you know, it's just kind of keep looking at that and seeing, okay, are they, what supplements are they doing? What schools are they adding? And then when they add a school, sometimes they don't meet with the counselor, so we need to bring them in and meet with them and make sure that they're following the right process. So, it's, it's just sort of ongoing through February, really, September through February. And then we, then we start with the juniors.
And my recollection is like depending on how many schools or what unique element certain schools have, there are certain things the counselor may have to do to make sure that that application goes through the way it's supposed to and it's processed. And then certainly, our assistants who work in the school counseling office do an enormous amount of work to, to make this all flow in terms of paperwork.
Yes, yep, they do an excellent job. Those two ladies have been there for several years and they really make the process go smoothly.
And I think you highlighted like Liz Petkowskis and Martha Murphy are those two women in the office that help process this. And I think we've had issues in the past where we send transcripts over to, or electronically to colleges and then all of a sudden, the college doesn't download information. I think some people may have experienced this. And we have frantic parents and frantic students who get technology-generated emails that your package is not complete because, and literally it's sitting in a queue somewhere in an enrollment office and the people just haven't collated everything together. So, they do a good job kind of turning that temperature down. And I think, Ms. Flynn, you could probably correct me here, but we're probably like 60, 65% are going early action, early decision.
Yes.
Which is the press from July to November 15th. As we're talking, there's a very, our counselors are working in the summertime. We have boot camp going on. There's a lot of things we're trying to do to try to alleviate that pressure. But for sure, acceptance rates are typically higher for those who might go early action, early decision, early decision is binding. And they're markedly higher for colleges now, in my opinion, because they want to put people in the seats and know that they can count on people. So, like, early decision is binding and they want to be able to count like, okay, we got someone that's going to enroll for sure. So, there's certainly some advantages. Our counselors go over that with students and families, which, you know, I think that's why of more, probably more people enrolling or rather applying early action or early decision. Such a high number.
One quick question, roughly how many students participated in the application boot camp this year? Do you know?
Oh, I think there was about 100.
Say we had four.
We have four sessions.
Two weeks, a morning session, afternoon session. And we have college admissions officers there, English teachers working on senior essays, supplemental essays, working on the Common App, going, setting all that. uh, working on the Common App, going, setting all that stuff up, um, and then communicating home with family. So truly, uh, we change the process for that and we've been able to accommodate everyone who's requested to participate in that, which is a good thing, so.
Well, I, I know that that was beneficial to my own children and, you know, to have your, your local public high school offer these kinds of opportunities, whether that's just an SAT prep course we offer that's much less expensive than what you would find elsewhere. The application boot camp's a tremendous value and it gets them on track and gives them a lot of good advice about how to move things forward. Um, and the work, uh, with a, you know, a high caseload that our counselors are doing to shepherd them through the process, I, you know, deeply, I've seen it from both a professional angle and also a parental, uh, viewpoint and, and, uh, I deeply appreciate the work that, that happens. The last comment I'll make, and Mr. Bizilow mentioned it in his opening remarks, um, I, I continue to be proud that Shrewsbury High School really tries to focus on, uh, find, helping students and their families go through this process in a way that emphasizes what's going to be a good fit. And, uh, also trying to make it clear that, you know, although certainly an important decision, um, if, if it's, you know, the, certainly the eighty-plus percent of our students who are looking at, uh, or really ninety when you look at two and four-year schools, what's the right fit? And at the same time, you know, it's not forever. And if it's not, ends up not being the right fit, you can transfer. And that's something that many people do and that's fine. You want to find the right, it's, given the amount of investment people are making, you want it to be a good experience. And when I look at the list of colleges and those who want to look at it on our website when this is posted tomorrow, um, the range, fewer, some, some fewer schools because of the really high numbers of places like UMass Amherst, but, uh, a hundred and ten different schools that are really places where you can see, like, our, their students are looking for something, uh, in particular, whether it's, you know, a certain type of strong programming, um, or that, that, that school might be known for. A variety of wonderful places to go to college and hopefully that's really going to be a good match for what their needs are and what their aspirations are. Rather than chasing prestige, so to speak, you know, we're not chasing name-brand things. We want students to go to the place where they're going to thrive, not because it happens to be a name-brand school for some reason. Uh, we want it to be the right match for the student. I think that, I, I, I'm proud that that's the way we approach it and, uh, you know, certainly, uh, encourage, uh, the high school to continue to do so. But thank you for the report and, uh, thanks for sharing the information tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is, um, a report with regard to the potential Shrewsbury High School expansion project. And we will also be taking a vote this evening to recommend a special town meeting warrant article. A special town meeting will convene on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five to vote on a warrant article appropriating funds for the feasibility study for the potential Shrewsbury High School expansion. It is expected that the recommended amount will be three million dollars and that fifty-two, um, point two-six percent reimbursement from the Massachusetts School Building Authority will apply. So the town's net cost would be approximately one point four-two million if the appropriation were fully expended. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi recommend that the committee vote to recommend that the town meeting members vote to support Article Eight in order to move the process forward so that Shrewsbury can follow the MSBA guidelines to hire a project team of the owner, of an owner's project manager firm and an architectural firm. And they would conduct the feasibility study process. And we have, uh, Mr. Girardi and Mr. Bizilow here tonight. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we ran through some slides tonight just to, uh, present to school committee and the community, um, when vote goes to special town meeting on October twenty-second, uh, what funding a feasibility study really means. Uh, because there is a cost associated with this and we just want to make sure that, uh, the community is aware of, of what would entail, what a feasibility study would entail for Shrewsbury High School if it were to, um, be approved by special town meeting and move forward in the MSBA, uh, process. So what we'll cover is where we're at with the eligibility period, which, uh, this was presented at the last, uh, school committee meeting. So for anyone interested in learning more, I recommend going back, uh, to, to that presentation. Some milestones in progress that we've made through the eligibility period, um, financing the feasibility study, a timeline for the project if the feasibility funding is approved, and then some frequently asked questions that we've heard historically and that we've heard a little bit this year, um, as we're approaching, uh, special town meeting on October twenty-second. So just to reorient ourselves with where we're at, uh, with, um, the MSBA process, we are currently in Module One, which is the eligibility period. We're coming to a close of this two-hundred-and-seventy-day period, uh, which is the end of November. I believe today is day two-hundred-and-nineteen of the two-hundred-and-seventy days. And, uh, we are prepared to move into Module Two, uh, with the, uh, some final pieces, getting the final, um, enrollment projection or enrollment, uh, certification from MSBA and then, um, the local vote or authorization on October twenty-second. And that would move us into the next step again, which would be the feasibility study. So taking a look forward, if, um, after October twenty-second, the, uh, special town meeting approves funding for the feasibility study, what would that mean? So next steps would be that there's a total of up to nine-hundred-and-thirteen days to complete three modules. Uh, Module Two is to form the project team and we'll speak to that in, in a few moments. Uh, Module Three is to actually conduct the feasibility study through the project team. And Module Four would be to complete the schematic design. And at the end of the feasibility study, what we have is a full product that would be able to share with the town around cost and what the product would be, uh, for, um, a potential renovation addition to the existing Shrewsbury High School. And let me just say that nine-hundred-and-thirteen days is the total amount. Um, it can certainly come in well under that if all things line up the way that we would like them to. So some milestones along the way, I'm going to allow Mr. Bizilow maybe to, to walk us through a few of these.
As you see from this chart, we've completed a number of these, uh, including the initial compliance certification, constructing the school building committee. Uh, we've had two meetings now with that group, uh, working on the educational profile questionnaire, uh, working through the online enrollment projection, maintenance and capital planning information. Uh, the, the one thing we talked about the last meeting was the enrollment and the housing starts that are under consideration with that. That's an important note for our community to take a look at that presentation as well, to look at the number of housing starts and how they're factored into that. The MSBA is going to finalize their enrollment count and get back to us, so that's what we're waiting on. And as Mr. Girardi has previously said, on October twenty-second, there'll be a local vote for authorization to determine if we'll move forward with the fees, to fund the feasibility study. And after that, if it's successful or if it's approved by town meeting, then we move on to, uh, getting into the feasibility agreement and after we complete all these steps. You know, the issue that we have and, and for those that have visited the high school and for student, uh, families that have students up there, we've talked about this and I think at curriculum, curriculum night, although it wasn't as jam-packed because we have less, certainly less parents than students, um, attend that night. Students will tell you that it's a really, really busy place in terms of just passing. Uh, I've mentioned that we've had to change our entire schedule to accommodate the number of students who eat lunch because there's not enough physical space. We changed our schedule to add a fourth lunch in it a, a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, to ensure that happened. But really the goal for this is to, to agree up, that there's a long-term student projection and to resolve our space issues. We've somewhat, uh, transformed some of the space, meeting spaces and instructional spaces to address the current needs that we have and there's just not enough space. We've made office space, given up conference rooms, um, there's a number of things that happened and you'll see next week in the class size report, that I'll present on just how tight we are for space. The building is generally scheduled somewhere between ninety-five and ninety-seven percent, uh, capacity. And also when we talk about, the, the factors used to determine the space include the district enrollment projections, the new housing starts, the independent population forecast by the MSBA, and then really important is the specific needs of educational programs, stuff that's happening within our, our building and looking with state guidance for that as well. Would you like me to continue on? Sure. Again, the goals are, part of the feasibility study is to take a look at properly sizing in addition or renovation to seventy-five Cypress Avenue at the current location, to address the severe overcrowding and really when you think about it, updating some of the major building systems which are approaching end of life. We've had considerable, we've had some issues with, uh, rain and some around the field house, we had a little bit of, uh, roofing issues that we continue to work through that, you know, we have some puddles that happen as a result of when we have heavy rain in the field house that could have to get cleaned up. We also have to consider the adequate space to meet the changing educational needs of not only students, uh, but the community. And really taking a look at the core function of the high school. And one of the things I always say is a couple of things run schools, uh, busing and cafeteria, food service. Those are real two critical things, like students are going to show up and we have to feed them. So, um, and that's a challenge we're having at SHS. And again, make sure we're clear about this, we're keeping the existing building at seventy-five Cypress Street. Although technically the MSBA requires us to consider, uh, new building as an option. They've signaled to us that that is not a scenario for our campus, for our facility. They're looking at, uh, addition or renovation. And the other thing that we talk about too is maintaining the current grade levels. We wouldn't be moving the eighth grade up, it's just a nine-twelve building, grades nine through twelve, not any, uh, grade adjustment.
All right. So the next couple of slides, I'll walk us through some graphs to really speak to, um, space issues and the severe overcrowding, uh, that we and the MSBA both believe is, is, uh, the, the, uh, significant issue with Shrewsbury High School. Um, and this first graph here is a historical, uh, student growth over, uh, from the beginning of, um, when Shrewsbury High School first came on board in two thousand and two. Uh, so the first year there were one thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-three students. And then you see in some successive years, uh, you know, it, it goes the first couple of years and then it starts to, to hit a five-year gap in between some of the data that we're showing. Uh, but the enrollment increases pretty quickly after the school building opened. As you can see on the green line, or I'll start with the red line, uh, that's the original design capacity. So when they first built the building, opening in two thousand and two, um, the original design capacity for that building was one thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-five students. So the belief at that time was there was some room for growth, but, um, from my understanding is even when that opened, there was some concern that, uh, capacity would be reached pretty quickly. And it did. Um, the contemporary design capacity, which is now the modern-day current programming and which is the model that MSBA works off of, and we've received some information from, um, our local architect that we've worked on a couple of projects with, uh, Lamro and Pagano Associates. Uh, the contemporary design capacity for the current building is one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty students. So having said that, as we move into, uh, the two thousand twenties, you can see that, um, numbers have risen significantly and they've, they've leveled off, but they've continued to grow. And one thing that I think that's important here is they haven't gone down. If you look at districts across the state, they are seeing reductions in enrollment. Um, for many schools, they're looking at, um, you know, downsizing their facilities. We are not experiencing that with Shrewsbury High School. And, you know, this next, uh, slide here will show some projections that we have beyond current time. Um, so this, the last slide showed where we are up until two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, current school year. This slide here shows a projection of where we would land up until twenty thirty-one, uh, twenty thirty, thirty-one and twenty thirty-one, thirty-two, which is when, if approved, the building would come online. There's a lot of data here, sort of data here, so I'll walk through it. The, um, the lines in black, the numbers in black are the actual enrollments dating back to the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year, uh, with our current capacity as of October first, last Wednesday, uh, which is the date in which we report data to, uh, Department of Education. The Shrewsbury High School had one thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven students. The, um, the lines in purple, which is the McKibben report, we conducted a independent assessment of, um, enrollment projections back in two thousand twenty-two with the McKibben Group. And their projections show that over time, um, those numbers maintain with a slight drop as we, we approach, uh, the end of the two thousand twenties into the two thousand thirties. But again, still remain significantly above the contemporary design capacity. And that was the data that we did share with MSBA when we, uh, initially submitted, um, a statement of interest. When we met with the MSBA back in August, again, we're waiting on final enrollment certification. But what they shared with us is that the ten-year average for the Shrewsbury High School enrollment based on their numbers is in those out years when the school building would be opening, uh, they're projecting at least one thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-five students. And that does not include some additional apartment complex data that we provided to them after that meeting, uh, which we spoke to at the last meeting. Uh, but we do expect that one thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-five students to increase, uh, with some of the upcoming, um, projects that are in the pipeline for apartment complexes. Just as a, you know, just to take a look, one thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-five versus the contemporary design of one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty, that's a difference of six-hundred-and-five students. Right? Uh, Mr. Bizilow said our, our, last year's graduating class was four hundred and twenty students. So that's larger than a grade levels worth of students would be the difference between the design capacity of the current building and what MSBA is projecting our enrollment to be in those years in which the school building would open if it were approved. Significant. Okay. Mr. Bizilow did a nice job of speaking to this, but, um, again, just to reiterate, uh, the MSBA through the feasibility study will examine options and costs for the expansion and updating of systems at Shrewsbury High School at seventy-five Cypress Ave. Um, it'll consider options for potential expansion and improvement, um, to address severe overcrowding, the programming needs, core functions of the building, physical building systems updates, which Mr. Bizilow spoke to. And this focuses all recommended additions and renovations on the current seventy-five Cypress Ave facility. So we're going to, uh, special town meeting on Oc- October twenty-second, uh, to seek a local vote authorization. Um, how much money would the feasibility study cost, uh, in working with Mr. Mizikar and his team? The number that he will be submitting, you know, be showing to, uh, special town meeting is three million dollars, three-point-zero million dollars. There's an estimated net cost to the town of approximately one point four million dollars after MSB re- MSBA reimbursements. Again, the feasibility study is reimbursable at the MSBA rate that it's, it gives to Shrewsbury. And the next slide will show that, but we're looking at current rate of fifty-two-point-two-six percent as the reimbursement rate for Shrewsbury as of March fourth, two thousand twenty-five. What does the, the three million dollars cover? It covers all costs of the feasibility study, including, uh, the cost of the designer, the architect, the owner's project manager, the OPM, and all contingencies, reimbursables, testings, surveys that need to happen beyond the base fees of the designer and the owner's project manager who would complete these, um, who would complete this work. The three-point-zero million dollars is based on what peer communities spent for similar projects recently. So that's the number, that's how the information was collected and we do have a, a slide, uh, that the community can take a look at to show those peer communities and their work. And again, Shrewsbury has a large enrollment of over eighteen hundred students. The amount of students pushes the cost towards the higher end of the range for comparable districts. So again, the reimbursement rate for the town for the feasibility study expenses would be the fifty-two-point-two-six percent as of the March fourth, two thousand twenty-five, uh, number. MSBA would assume fifty-two-point-two-six percent of it, uh, of the cost and that would come through reimbursement, which is approximately one point six million dollars of the total three million, if the three million is fully expensed. Right? That's an assumption that we would make that, um, that we're working off of now. And again, if, um, the three-point million, uh, zero million dollars is fully expensed, the expect, expected net cost to Shrewsbury would be approximately one point four million dollars after MSBA reimbursement.
In order to, in order to give the community and the committee some scope and understanding of the, how the feasibility projections come about and the appropriations, if you look at this chart, basically the school years on, uh, the left, uh, in terms of the district and the grade configuration and current enrollment and what was appropriate for each of these, uh, similar projects in terms of high schools that looking for renovation additions. Milford's the close, well, Worcester's close, but Milford's also is two-point-five million, their enrollment's twelve-hundred-and-ninety-seven students. BMR, which is a very small school, three hundred and eighty-two students total enrollment there. B M R, which is a very small school, three hundred and eighty-two students total enrollment there. Uh, feasibility study appropriation was a million dollars. Salem again, uh, towards the bottom is nine hundred and forty-eight students. Little, about half of what Shrewsbury High School is a two million dollars for feasibility. And the Berkshire, Berkshire Hills Regional School District, four hundred and fifty students is one point five million. To kind of give you a scope of, of the enrollment piece and the appro- the feasibility study appropriations.
Okay, so to dig a little bit deeper into what the feasibility would be paying for, it's kind of two, two pieces of the, of the puzzle here. Um, the first is the preliminary design program, the P D P. And what this does is it really kind of lays the foundation and collects the data for the work being done. Um, includes the educational program. This is a, a, a large document that is created. That really details in significant detail, uh, the school's curriculum and goals. And that becomes the basis for the design. Uh, what is the, you know, what is the, the goal, the educational goals for um, for the work being done? From there, it'll create an initial space summary. And what that does is it calculates the required square footage for the school. Based on our educational program that we present and the rules that guided by M S B A. It provides an evaluation of existing conditions. So it does a thorough assessment of the current building systems. The structure, the site and capacity of the, of the school. And it does a preliminary evaluation of alternatives. Again, um, develops an initial solution. And it requires us to look at all possible solutions. Um, what a new building, uh, would be looking at a new building. We're saying no, M S B A is, is saying that's not something that they're interested in doing. However, we still need to take a look at that as an option to show that it's, it's not, um, you know, it's not the solution that will make the most sense. And we need to compare the merits of each. From there, it, it moves into the preferred schematic report. And what this does is it takes that initial information and it creates a, a final uh, report, a final evaluation of the alternatives. Which is a detailed analysis of the most viable solutions. Provides a recommendation of the preferred solution. Alright, the school building committee formally recommends the option. That is most cost-effective and best for education. And then the preliminary project budget and schedule. It sets the initial cost estimate and timeline for the preferred solution. At the end of the feasibility study, we will have the initial cost estimate, we'll have the timeline for the preferred uh, solution.
Again, the feasibility potential timeline, just a graph here in terms of what this looks like. So you already got kicked off. Um, we'll get that up in a minute. We're looking at the uh, special town appropriate, uh, special town meeting appropriation vote for the fall of two thousand and twenty-seven later. The earliest is fall twenty twenty-seven, the latest is fall twenty twenty-eight. So there's uh, a little bit of a window here, townwide exclusion vote. Fall of two thousand and twenty-seven, the later date, fall twenty twenty-eight. Design documentation bidding takes ten to twelve months, the construction will be twenty-four to thirty-six months and the project complete on the earlier end will be August of twenty thirty and later will be twenty thirty-two.
So we spoke about the nine hundred and uh, one days. You know, the, the full scope of that would, would be a longer, would be the later M S B A time, timeline. Where the community needs more time throughout each of these processes to complete checkpoints along the way to get to the project completion. The earlier timeline is we're able to hit benchmarks along the way at a quicker pace, um, with a potential project completion of August of twenty thirty. So moving on to some frequently asked questions, um, that we've received from the community, both, both historically through other projects that are common questions. And some that are, are more um, recent. What will the money uh, to fund the feasibility study be specifically used for? Uh, we hope we captured that in some of the slides, but uh, to speak, you know, topically, the funds will be used to hire an owner's project manager, the O P M. And the architectural firm, um, both of which are required by the M S B A and must be procured following M S B A requirements. Um, these professionals and the cost for these professionals will lead the feasibility through the completion of the schematic design.
Yeah, everyone's question is how much would a potential addition or renovation cost and what would it entail? That's really too early for us to tell. That's the purpose of the feasibility study, to get those answers to those questions, be able to inform the community, the committee. Around what we'd look at and what would it cost and ultimately go to the vote, the voters to decide upon that. But this is the first step in terms of detailing what we might need and coming up with the most cost-effective solution.
How are the O P M, uh, the project manager and the architectural, uh, the architect selected? Um, they're hired through a competitive selection process and that's dictated by state procurement laws and M S B A regulations. Um, the O P M is hired first and then they lead and support us with the hiring of the architect.
So what will happen for the, for the feasibility study is not authorized by a town meeting. Town will not be able to continue the next phase of process with the M S B A. We've, and we, the town would forfeit our place in the capital project uh, pipeline. We'd have to reapply for admission in the future if wish and with no guarantee of us being accepted or selected again. Um, this would also include uh, pushing the timeline for, for the solution with our enrollment that still is severely overcrowded. And also, uh, we would not be, potentially not be provided any state funding for any renovation. Or replacement of building systems such as H V A C, the roof, windows, et cetera.
And just to summarize, um, where we are again with the eligibility period, we are approaching um, the end of the two hundred and seventy days. Uh, ag- again, I believe we're at date two hundred and nineteen. Uh, we are moving forward to um. Receive the enrollment certification and then the local authorization of funding, uh, through the special town meeting on October twenty-second. Um, if that were to go through, at that point, we'd be able to um, to meet our requirements and submit um, with the M S B A. Information to move into the feasibility study, the next phase of the, of the project. And with that, we're happy to receive any questions and, and um, and welcome your vote to um. You know, move the funding forward, uh, by the, by the school committee to special town meeting on October twenty-second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the, it's really important to look at the timeline and the M S B A process is a real check and balance. You know, it's modules that we have to go through. It's a, it's not just the town. There's another set of eyes assessing all of this and this was brought to the state after some large projects that were very expensive years ago. And it's a tried and true process in Shrewsbury. We've done it a few times on, come in on time and under budget. So it's something that we're familiar with. And I think the other piece for me, as I said here, we know we've had a longstanding overcrowding issue with the high school. This is nothing new. We are in the pipeline and I would hate to see the feasibility study not be passed at special town meeting. If that did happen, I don't know if we would get back in or ever get back in. And we have a significant amount of just general maintenance that's going to have to be done at the high school. That will be totally on the taxpayers' dime. We will not have any reimbursement and it will be significant, the amount of work that has to be done. So I think it's. It's a fiscally responsible process for an addition at the high school. And we all live in town, we're all taxpayers. I'd much rather use the M S B A process and have that high reimbursement. Amount to get a very large capital project done. So I'm fully in support. It would suggest that we definitely vote to um, recommend this at town meeting.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for the amount of work that's gone into this. This is a lot of work for something that's very, very important um, to all of us. Um, I agree. I think that this is important for us to do. I think it, it makes sense for us to continue on with the feasibility study. Um, and to see where that takes us because that'll give us all the answers. I agree, part of my concern is that if we don't move this along. I'm, I'm worried about what that means for us and if this project ever gets done and we still will have that chronic overcrowding. And that affects so many parts of the high school. Um, one thing that maybe, another frequently asked question is. In terms of the reimbursement, do we get reimbursed after the expansion of the high school happens? Or does that, does the reimbursement start once we get into the feasibility? When does, because town, you know, some people in town might say, are we on the hook for this amount of money? And then they'll give it back to us ten, twelve years from now? Or is that something that once this process starts, we start getting reimbursed money back?
Um, so the reimbursement does start uh, during the feasibility study, once we procure the project manager, um, and the architect. However, the final reimbursement number for the project, I believe, is determined fall of two thousand and twenty-seven. Given the current uh, timeline that we have, um, and that would be prior to uh, the town coming to a, a vote. As to whether or not to move forward with the full project. So we would have a full understanding of what the final reimbursement rate would be for the project. And from there, uh, reimbursement happens on a very consistent basis throughout the, the um, timeline of the building of the project. Uh, which I believe is monthly submissions that happen. And that's one of the values of having the project managers, that they oversee and maintain all of the. Um, reimbursable, reimbursables that come in and they submit them systematically in M S B A. Again, one of the great reasons why working with the M S B A is valuable to the town is that those reimbursements come in as scheduled, as expected.
Yeah, I think that's just important for, for, especially as we go into town meeting, that everybody understands that we're not waiting on this money. This is something that as we move along in the process, we're being reimbursed as we go. Um, so this does have my full support. I do, I would like to see this. You know, pass along at, at a town meeting. Um, and like I said, I'm in, in support of this.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I think it's very uh, basic, um, simple to understand and also it covers all the comprehensive issues related to the. Uh, overcrowding, cost reimbursement, support from M S B A and everything. So the, I like the presentation. So I do support the um, uh, moving it forward with this uh, warrant article. Um, also saying that the one commonality across the presentation is M S B A. So we are a part of the, we, M S B A is overseeing this project. They are, uh, we are playing by their rules and requirements. And then we are getting the reimbursement from the M S B A. So it's, it's a win-win situation for the town and the taxpayers. Uh, rather than fully funding this project on our own, eliminating M S B A. If we don't go into. Supporting this now, it will be the full project, whatever the cost implications would be. Um, on the taxpayer, taxpayers rather than splitting up with M S B A. So we do have experience working with M S B A with all the projects we, we previously done, Beal School, Oak Middle School, um. Window replacements and everything. So we do understand the process. We, I think, um. Um, we work very well with M S B A. So we are lucky to be part of the pipeline. Uh, and then we would like to keep that place, uh, at least, uh, at least to see what the feasibility, uh. Committee will come back and say what the cost is, what the need is, what the requirements look like, so that we can make a decision at that time. But I fully support to move this forward at this point.
Thank you. I also fully support this. Um, by authorizing the funds for the feasibility study. Town meeting will allow us to continue in the M S B A process and the pipeline to explore a solution for the overcrowding of the high school. And the academic space limitations that we're facing there. Um, as you've outlined for us, this. Sp- the space is not gonna, this problem isn't gonna get any better. Um, there's the overcrowding. In the population growth in Shrewsbury is a problem that's gonna continue to exist and M S B A believes that, um, in looking. And I think when we get their enrollment numbers back, um, we will see that. Um, and by continuing in the M S B A program, we're utilizing state dollars to address problems. And I do believe I agree with Ms. Fritz, this is, um, it's the fiscally responsible thing to do. Um, there's repair costs that we're going to have to face, um, for physical updates that need to be performed by the town regardless. Um, the roof, um, you know, H V A C, those issues aren't going away. Um, and to get those reimbursed at fifty-two percent, um, of the cost, it's, it's just the right responsible thing to do as a tax. You know, for the taxpayers. So I'm fully in support of this. Um, Dr. Sawyer, do you have any further comments?
I concur certainly. I, we've been very fortunate to be the beneficiary of two excellent uh, full projects, Sherwood Middle School and, and Beal School. Uh, as well as the repair project at Oak Middle School. Prior to that, a number of years ago, we had a, a windows project at uh, Spring Street School as well. Um, but uh, you know, the M S B A has been an excellent partner for us and uh, I think to address. Uh, the needs that we have in terms of the chronic overcrowding and the building systems that are aging. Um, to con- to consider, to get a full consideration of what um, that project of that scope would cost. What the most cost-effective solution is, this is the, the pathway to finding that out for the community, so the community can make a, a, a fully informed decision. Uh, so authorizing that funding, I know Mr. Mizikar will speak to the funding more specifically with the finance committee tomorrow evening and then at town meeting and special town meeting itself. Um, in, in terms of that, to that question about the borrowing and the reimbursement, or rather the, the funding. Um, you know, my understanding is that, that, that the town would not even have to do any borrowing because the reimbursement will start to come in. And just that initial one point four million or so that will be, uh, uh, the town would be net responsible for, uh, is what would be uh, required. Uh, but the, the M S B A requires that you show you can fund the whole thing without reimbursement if you need to. That's part of their process. We experienced that with both the. Um, Sherwood and Beal projects as well. Uh, but it is my hope that uh, special town meeting, the town meeting members at special town meeting. Um, see their way to authorize the funding so we can move forward with uh, doing the work of really determining what the best, most cost-effective uh, project to solve this issue would be.
So I'd like to um, make a motion that the school committee vote to recommend that town meeting members support Article eight. On the October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five special town meeting warrant in order to provide funding for the Shrewsbury High School feasibility study. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda this evening is a recommendation with regard to the district's strategic goals and action steps for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. In April of two thousand and twenty-three, the school committee voted unanimously to approve an updated five-year strategic plan for the district. In September, school committee members met with members of the uh, S P S leadership team. To review the draft goals and action steps for the district that will advance the district's strategic priorities during the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. The draft was subsequently reviewed by the full district leadership team and at a meeting of all nine of our schools' school councils. And we have a report tonight from Ms. Clouder. Um, she's going to be summarizing um, the goals for us. And then they will be posted for a public review and feedback, um, in advance of our next school committee meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you for your participation in the strategic planning process and for helping us to engage other stakeholders in that process. It's been a bit of a whirlwind, but we've got some good feedback and some nice momentum as a result of that work. Uh, so last time I was here, for people who are tuning in for the first time, um, I reported on the progress we made towards last year's goals. And establishing goals for this year is the priority for tonight. Uh, so we have shared a draft of uh, goals and action steps for you to consider and to invite the larger community to review. Um, and the purpose of this presentation is really to kind of present some highlights of that. Um, a good reminder as always that in the book, there is more detail. Um, and certainly it's a lengthy goals document and I would encourage people to take the time to look at that. Again, for people who are tuning in for the first time to hear about our goals, uh, this graphic just serves as a reminder about the strategic planning process. Um, two thousand and twenty-three marked the beginning of a new strategic plan. Uh, as Dr. Sawyer referenced earlier, we're fortunate to be in a good place in terms of our uh, planning. For the work over the span of the, of the plan. And this is the third year of our strategic plan. So we're here to seek approval. In, in your next vote, uh, on our most recent draft in advance of finalizing goals for the coming year. And um, when done well, a strategic planning uh, process is an inclusive one. And so you can see, we had a lot of help getting to this point. Uh, we created a first draft together, uh, at the school committee workshop where we gathered with principals and assistant principals. Um, and thereafter, different groups of district leaders, both kind of school principal group and the district leadership team, which is made up of about sixty-five. Um, administrators, reviewed and refined the draft. And then we presented that draft, um, at school council, the joint school councils meeting and sought feedback from. Uh, families and even high school students. Um, so the version in your book reflects that latest feedback. And feedback is really important. So, um, as you mentioned, um, following this presentation, the draft will be posted on the district website. As all our reports and presentations are, and we invite the community to give us or give you feedback directly in anticipation of, of your looking at it next week. And again, one of our areas of focus is always that North Star and in a sea of initiatives. Uh, we look to think about student outcomes and our aspirations for them, uh, in guiding our priorities. So you'll see our emphasis on outcomes for students really reflected in the action steps and the metrics. So you'll see our emphasis on outcomes for students really reflected in the action steps and the metrics within the plan. But I always want to hearken back to this slide as, as being kind of the synergy between where our commitments are and that they're grounded in our vision and our core values. So you'll notice that there's continuity as a theme. We're deliberately choosing to stay the course with the same three commitments. The commitment to educational excellence, the commitment to enhanced well-being of all, and the commitment to optimization of resources. However, within each commitment, you'll see an evolution of our work manifested in a new areas of focus, and I'll go into more details about that. And I think there's a tension between wanting to continue to understand that change is a process and sustaining our efforts is really important to make meaningful change and also responding to the data that we're seeing to identify new areas of need. So when we look at the commitment to educational excellence, you'll see that there are four priorities. There were four priorities in the, in the previous year's goals. But our areas of focus have shifted to really include expanding the literacy curriculum to grade seven and eight. So now we have a K-eight aligned approach. Increasing English Language Arts achievement for all students. So one of the things we'll be focusing on is really looking at writing outcomes. Strengthening tier-one instructional practices, that's not just for English Language Arts, but also for all the content areas. Career technical education at the high school, reviewing distant practices and policies regarding cell phone use and AI. And strengthening math interventions. We've learned a lot from literacy intervention and we're thinking hard about how we can use some of those structures to advance students' math outcomes. In terms of our commitment to the enhanced well-being of all, again, same number of priorities, but different areas of focus. So we've launched the positive behavioral intervention supports, both through professional development and through building-based kind of created guidance. And that reaches down to every student in every building in terms of having clear expectations for what behavior looks like in different spaces. And that's paired with the Wayfinder social emotional learning curriculum. That work will continue. Continuing efforts to reduce the rates of chronic absenteeism. We saw some suggestions at the end of the year that made an impact, particularly at the high school. And so thinking about what we've learned from that to leverage at other grade spans. Identifying effective prevention and intervention for challenging behaviors. We still see more challenges with behavior than we'd like. And we're hoping that over time, our efforts, both in terms of the social emotional learning programming and our systems of support will help us with that. Addressing workplace stress and supporting staff wellness. You heard recently about the food service recommendations, so we'll be grappling with those. And then collecting and responding to discipline data. And in terms of the commitment to optimization of resources, one of the clear themes that emerged from talking to the joint school councils was the raising, the importance of communicating and raising community awareness about the budget process and particularly the impact of the high school overcrowding in terms of future planning. Obviously, we've been fortunate to seek grants to support some of the things that are real aspirational for us. Most likely, I mean, most recently kind of literacy and CTE. But continuing to seek both grants and philanthropic funding is important. We want to enhance the recruiting, recruiting and retention of excellent staff and from a diverse pool of candidates. As I was leaving, to congratulate one of the Coolidge students that received an award tonight, I mentioned, you know, Mrs. Inimradie is still volunteering at Beal. And her, she said, I know I'm subbing. And I'm thinking, so how do we move this parrot from a subbing role into a professional role? That's, that's top of mind for us under optimization of resources. And securing funding in the town meeting, as you heard, to advance the MSBA process. The next step in this process is really for school councils, which develop school improvement plans to reflect building-based goals and actions that are aligned with our district commitments and district goals. And you can see here the tentative schedule for the school improvement plan presentation docket. But just as, as school improvement councils have, you know, the school improvement task falls to school councils, I want to invite the general public to kind of think about and give us input into the plan. So there's a task for those of you watching at home too. Our strategic plan is always strengthened by stakeholder input, and the draft will be posted on the website tomorrow. But there's a tight turnaround before you're being asked to approve it so that we have goals in mind when we're going forward. And so I would encourage people watching to review the plan and to let us know what you think about it. And that's, that's really it for tonight.
Thank you.
I'm curious as to what questions you might have or anticipate from the community.
Thank you for presenting and something that I think we're getting better as we work through these, how, how we work on the strategic goals and priorities and look to the next. Because it's not recreating every year, it's building upon, which I think is something the community needs to know. We're not just getting rid of something, we're just continuing the things that are good. And maybe if there's something that's not working correctly, then we can tweak it as we move along. And again, very collaborative process. It includes all stakeholders. Like you mentioned, even high school students had input into this. So I think it's well thought out. It hits the areas that we think need to be. But again, the community has a opportunity to give their feedback. And maybe it's something we're missing.
Yeah.
Thank you. Actually, one of my favorite, other than having students come to visit us, one of my favorite parts of the school year is when we do the, the strategic plan for the year. Because it is such a collaborative process between the beginning of the school year, just looking at the year ahead and the year past, and then all the people that are involved in this. It's not just, it's not a top-down decision. It's not the school committee saying, these are your priorities for the year. This isn't Dr. Sawyer saying, this is what you're working on. This is feedback from school committee, from Dr. Sawyer, from all of our assistant superintendents, from our building principals, our assistant principals, our school councils, students. This really is an all, all-hands-in approach. And I think, you know, we see this so often, we have these conversations and we look at what happened last year. We check the boxes, those are great. How can we improve that? Or hey, we, we didn't really get to where we wanted to be. How do we get there the following year? But when we have the all-school council meetings, that's another time for us to listen to the actual schools and the communities to see, we're looking at it from one lens. And then when you're sitting at the tables, talking to, to parents and they're giving a different perspective on things, it kind of helps frame where we go from here. And I appreciate that. And I think that, that builds a stronger district plan because it includes all of us. So I think these are really good goals for us to have. Again, it's built off of last year. We kind of have somewhere to go from here too. And yeah, I, I appreciate the work that goes into this because it's, it's good work. And I hope, I hope we do get feedback on this because it just makes everything stronger.
I give credit to Dr. Sawyer for our culture of really making sure that there are lots of voices represented in our planning. And I think it, it can be tempting to look at the next shiny thing. And it takes courage to think about, okay, well, we're gonna sustain our focus here because it's not yet where we want.
Yeah.
But I, I really appreciate and admire that it's his leadership. He's always sought input from a wide variety of stakeholders.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I think as a freshman on this board, I really, I'm really, I'm really impressed on how, how involved everyone at these meetings prior to coming to this final proposal, all the way from September tenth to every session, like principals, assistant principals, teachers, parents, so students even. So it's almost like a corporate event. Like very rigorous, very, very meticulous and very collaborative effort. This, this is what we do in a day in, day out at our office. So I'm very impressed we are, we're having such a rigor, rigor in adopting these priorities. I, I like the way every slide says continue, majority of the points are continue. So that, that itself says that we are on a right path. And then we are taking the best and adapting it to the rest of the schools, either middle school or high, elementary school. So I think it's a way of learning it. And then I think we call it BOB, best of best. So we learn from BOBs and we implement for the rest of the teams. So this is exactly what it looks like. It looks, so I'm very impressed with the entire process. So hopefully, the community will definitely chime in and maybe blind spots we may have, may have missed. But to me, it looks like a very holistic process and very thorough, and I'm very impressed with all, all in all. Thank you. Thanks for all the hard work and coordination.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for all the work that went into this. As we referenced, it's a very collaborative process that we go through, starting in September. One of my favorite traditions is the school committee and administration meeting and dinner that we have every September to kind of kick this work off. It's a really nice opportunity for us to get together and, you know, hear directly from the administrators that are doing the work in the different school buildings. And it's just, you know, very helpful for all of us to hear directly from everyone. I believe that seeing the results of like adapting the really strong data culture that we're, is really paying so many dividends in developing these, you know, new action steps. Especially like identifying students for interventions, using new attendance data, like all of those different steps. And I'm so glad to see those all incorporated. And I just, we just continue to reap dividends from the work that we did two years ago to set all of this up right and that we can just continue to build and move it forward. And I look forward to hearing, you know, the community's feedback if they have, would, would, you know, I would encourage everyone to really, once the information's released on our website, to take a look at it. It's a very detailed document. It lays it all out in a very user-friendly fashion. And just to alert the community, our next meeting is actually next Wednesday, October fifteenth. We are meeting, we usually meet every other week, but this month, we're meeting back-to-back because of the special town meeting in October. So we would ask for your feedback before our next meeting on October fifteenth, next Wednesday. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clouder, for the presentation. And I think the, you know, the focus and emphasis is, is spot on. And certainly wanting to maintain our focus and, and continue building on the good work that's happened over the past few years. We have a really strong strategic plan overall. You know, these are, these are very challenging times for public education everywhere. And I think that, you know, finding ways to really make sure that we build on the successes we're seeing, but we're not where we need to be yet. And, and you know, we want to continue to work on improving and making sure we can provide the best possible experience for our students, whether that's the academic excellence piece or the enhanced well-being of all, and certainly in terms of the, the governance of making sure we have as efficient and cost-effective approach as, as an organization as we can have. I appreciate the mentioning, you know, both from Ms. Clouder, but also members of the committee around the sort of the collaborative nature of this work. And I'm looking at our core values on our, our website here. And, you know, collaboration is one of those core values. And I think making sure that we're, we're promoting that. And it's also making me nostalgic in, in terms of, you know, this is, of course, my announcement earlier this evening. But, you know, twenty-nine years ago, I experienced my first school committee administration dinner. That's a, that's a, you know, I, I, I'm not sure if Dr. Bent started that tradition, or it might have been Dr. Collins before him, but it certainly has been going on almost three decades. And I just thought it was, I remember being just really struck by what a professional culture that projected and giving the opportunity for the elected board of volunteer citizens to be able to interact with the school leadership team and, and break bread and be able to, to get to know each other a little bit, to be able to collaborate effectively on that work and really listen to each other and, and try to find the best solutions for, for the school district. And, you know, and appreciated it just as much this past September as I did when I first took part of it as assistant principal. All our assistant principals attend, our principals, our central office leaders, as well as our school committee members. I, I know that, that we recently had a public records request, you know, for what the cost of that dinner was. And it came up to about sixteen hundred dollars and an investment well-made, I think, in terms of the, the quality of the work and, and what we're trying to do to promote excellence in this district. So again, you know, appreciate the work and all the interactions, the school councils, the, the interaction with our, our faculty and staff who also will send this out to, and if they have any commentary, certainly. But, you know, we work through our district faculty advisory councils, our parent educator advisory councils in an ongoing way to see how these, you know, strategic priorities are going and, you know, the work that's happening. And how can we make sure we're trying to pace it in a way that makes it doable and we're, they have the resources they need to make it happen. It's very challenging work, but I, I do think we're getting traction and good things are happening for kids in the district. So look forward to any feedback we get. And we'll look forward to having the school committee vote to officially adopt the district goals at your meeting a week from tonight.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposed policy five ninety, the middle school pathway exploration policy. This is a first reading of this proposed new middle school pathway exploration policy for review by the committee. Updated Massachusetts state regulations require that all public school districts with middle school grades have a middle school pathways exploration policy that documents how middle school students in the district are made aware of and gain exposure to career technical education schools and programs available to them. Ms. Sharifapour and Mr. Velika Pooti are members of the policy subcommittee and will present information about the proposed new policy.
Thank you, Ms. Bishay. The policy subcommittee met last week to discuss the middle school pathway exploration policy, which is what is becoming policy five ninety. Just to provide a little context around why we're adopting this policy, Massachusetts State Regulation six oh three CMR four point zero three six one requires that all public school districts with middle school grade levels have a middle school pathway exploration policy, which we are presenting tonight, that documents how middle school students in their district are made aware of and gain exposure to career technical education, which I may refer to as CTE later on. That they have exposure to CTE education, schools and programs available to them in their own district, as well as regional agricultural and other public high schools. Within the policy, we need to include a couple of items. One, how the middle schools in a district will collaborate with career technical schools and programs in their district, regional agricultural and other public high schools to inform students about such opportunities to them. Two, how the district will provide all middle school students an opportunity to tour during regular middle school hours with the transportation cost to be assumed by the school hosting the tours. And three, how the exploration and awareness of secondary school options, including career technical education schools and programs, is connected to a student's secondary and post-secondary academic and career planning. While the district has been providing these opportunities and has a process in place, which has been further enhanced in recent years as we've expanded our CTE opportunities, both in Shrewsbury and with our partner, local partnerships, this policy subcommittee further outlined within our policy how the district will comply with each of the requirements. So I'm not going to read through all of it. But we did send this to our legal counsel and they will weigh in prior to us potentially accepting this policy. We are recommending that we will revisit the policy in five years' time. A copy of the proposed policy will be made available on our website tomorrow. As with everything that we do, we welcome all feedback on this policy. Encourage all those who are watching at home to read through this. And if you have comments, please email us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Our policies as a district are only made stronger with input from our community. So at this time, if the committee has any questions or comments, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, so it's a, it's a very, very, we're proactively adopting the policy by looking at what the state need requires and then what we are, what's our interest is in the career technical education. We're also expanding it to grade seven, giving the opportunity for grade seven students to learn and grade eight to go on tour. So it is a very, very hands-on for the both grade seven and grade eight and more, more impact on grade eight technical tours at the technical colleges, schools. So yeah, please, it would be, if the community looks at it and provides the feedback, that would be great so that we can work.
Thank you very much for your, to the policy subcommittee members for your work on this policy. We appreciate it. And again, if the community has any input, we'd love to hear from you. And again, it would be before, we're planning to vote on this at our next meeting on October fifteenth. So if you could get us your feedback before that time, that would be helpful. Thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
No, I mean, again, it really tracks closely with what the state is requiring for this. This is an update they've done in terms of state-level policy and is requiring of, of local districts. Much of what's in the policy has already been our practice. Um, much of what's in the policy has already been our practice, so it's not, it's not like this is a big new shift, matter of fact, Monday. Dr. Lizat and I, uh, were at Oak Middle School where we had. Uh, representatives, the principal and counselors from Lester High School, making a presentation to our eighth graders, and and. Um, there'll be, uh, the tour happening uh for those students, I think, on the fifteenth itself, as I think was mentioned, and and so we're. We're already doing the things that we have done over time, initially with ACAB, but now shifting to do that more with Lester. Um, and we'll also be sure to make sure that, uh, Ms. Aries, our our CTE coordinator, will be. Uh, providing similar information around the uh career renovation pathways that Shrewsbury High School offers as well. Um, and submit that eighth graders and their families can make the most informed choice when it comes to thinking about what kind of high school program they're they're interested in, but. Again, open to feedback and and we'll ask you to adopt it uh next week.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is new business, um correspondence with the select board regarding Town of Shrewsbury Government Study Committee, we'll have discussion and a vote. Um, the select board has created a Town of Shrewsbury Form of Government Study Committee, charged with reviewing. The town's current form of government and making recommendations as to whether any changes might be appropriate. As any potential future changes to the town's form of government would have an impact on the school department. The school committee wishes to ensure that the work of the Form of Government Study Committee benefits from the perspective of the school committee when doing its work. The school committee is asked to consider whether to send correspondence to the select board on this topic. Which could include a request that a representative of the school committee be added to the study committee. And a draft letter we have circulated, so, um, Ms. Fritz, would you like to?
Sure, I asked this be placed on our agenda, and looking at this form of government study, when you look at a city or town's form of uh government model or structure. It can significantly impact how a school department and function of school committee work. And they they look at the uh structural responsibility and the roles of the school committee and educational goals, um. Policy setting and also implementing things like approval of capital projects, so there's a lot of work. That's done, and depending on the form of government, it's how engaged your school committee and school department would be within that those areas. So I think it's vitally important that we do have one member of the school committee sit on the Form of Government Study. I think we need somebody to bring the knowledge of what our school department and our school committee work is, and how it could be affected by um a form of government. And the charge does include um bringing recommendations to the select board. So that's why I think it's really important that there is someone from our committee that sits on that Form of Government Study, and I'd ask that we. Do send a formal letter to the select board asking them to update the charge. To include one member of our school committee in the composition of that study group. Just to bring that knowledge as they're going to be making an important recommendation to our select board on form of government going forward.
Um, I I appreciate you putting um a letter together to send over to the select board to have them consider. Um, adding somebody from the school committee onto um this committee, I think. I understand, you know, in terms of. When they created the charter, it didn't have us specifically in that charter, and, you know, there is something in the town managers that. You know, you're not supposed to sit on multiple committees, however, um, I think considering what the charge of this. This particular committee is, um, I do think it's important to include. Different members of different forms of the government in this, just to weigh in, because there may be things that. You know, a select board member doesn't necessarily see from a school committee point of view, there may be things that we don't see from a select board point of view. Um, and I think it's it's important to have another voice in this, especially with something that is going to. So directly impact us and the work that we do, so. Um, I appreciate you um sending this over to the select board, and I hope they they give this consideration. Um, moving forward to potentially put somebody from school committee onto the committee that they have.
Oh, thank you, thanks, uh, again, thank you for up on drafting the letter and then sharing it. Um, I do agree, uh, to the members' comments, I think we do definitely. Uh, it would be a great opportunity for us to be one of the member from our self, uh, school committee, be there. Uh, representative or listening in, what, how the thought process is, how how one or the other will impact. Schools or towns, because it's a balancing act. Um, and also be a town being very um proactive in in school and school-related growth and development. It's very uh critical for a a member to be be part of the uh voice, uh, showing the. So I do support this, and I respectfully request the select board to consider it, uh, thank you.
May I have a motion that the school committee authorize the chair to send the letter as presented to the uh select board as a request to include. A member of the school committee on the Form of Government Study Committee.
Second.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Um, the minutes from the school committee meeting held on September twenty-fourth and the school committee all-school councils workshop held on September twenty-ninth were enclosed in our packet. Does anyone have any amendments or changes? They will be accepted as distributed. And the, I believe, um, we need to go into executive session this evening. Um, so I will request a motion to adjourn to executive session. Uh, A, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-two F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may. Have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, units A and or B. The Shrewsbury Parent Professional Association and or Cafeteria Workers Association. C, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Non-union clerical and support staff and or administrators, purpose two. And D, for the purpose of addressing general law, chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant aid requirements. Federal and Massachusetts student record laws, purpose seven. Where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. Um, may I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Roll call votes required, Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifapoor?
Aye.
Mr. Velika Pooty?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you, and good night.